Good evening and welcome to the City Council Meeting of the City of Lenore for Tuesday, July the 18th, 2023. We welcome you here this evening. Thank you all for being with us. As we normally do, we will start off here in just a minute with our moment of silence and our pledge of allegiance. And then after we finish that, we will get into our meeting. So please rise for our moment of silence and remain standing as we salute our country. Thank you. We salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. As we get started this evening, before we go into our public hearings, would like to talk just a few minutes and say some very special thank yous to a lot of people who this past weekend did such a great job with our, one of our greatest signature events that we have here in Lenore in Caldwell County, the North Carolina Blackberry Festival. It was a great success. Lots and lots and lots of people were here. Weather was kind of warm. You know how that goes, but it was a great, great weekend. Ended a little quicker than we wanted to on Saturday night with a big storm coming in, but that happens and we can't control that certainly. But very much quickly, a very special thanks to a number of people. Obviously Kaylin Horn and Matthew Anthony and Sarah Wirt, who were the people who were the kind of the organizers and put everything together. We appreciate all their hard work, not only the weekend, but in preparation and coming up to it. The Downtown Lenore Development Alliance, which is the nonprofit group that actually runs and controls the festival, makes decisions on that. And we appreciate all their hard work and their board members. They were all, I think, involved in it. Volunteers, we had over 150 volunteers who came out and, and were a part of the whole weekend. Thanks to Becky and Mary Ruth, who put that, are the organizers of that and putting everybody together in those jobs. Our city Lenore departments, we couldn't do anything without all you guys. Our police and our fire, Public Works, Public Utilities, Parks and Rec, you guys were fantastic. We appreciate everything that you did. You were there from early morning till late at night, making sure everything was, was taken care of. Duke and the maintenance, Duke Moore and the maintenance crews kept everything going and repairs and any problems that we had. Our, our street sanitation crews kept the garbage cleaned up. We had a lot of people that were very complimentary of how fast the cans would fill and then we would get them and, and take care of that. So we really do appreciate all that hard work on that. To Chief Dino DiBenardi and the Caldwell EMS, they were great. They were there to help assist our, our people and did a great job in taking care. Thank God we didn't have, but very few of the things happen. A few people got overheated and a lady fell during the rainstorm, but other than that, it was really not terrible things that happened and we appreciate what they did there. So thanks to, to Chief DiBenardi and all the EMS team. Thank you for all the event sponsors. I'll quickly tell you those, Fleet Genius, UNC Healthcare, Fairfield Chair, Blue Ridge Energy, McCray Modern, Food Lion, Print, Dirt, Cheap.com, TodayBanners.com, of course, the City of Lenore and the Caldwell Chamber. We're all part of the sponsorships of that. Thank you to all our vendors. We had over 226, I think, vendors, Matthew? Am I pretty close there? That, that all that came and we appreciate those food and beverage and crafts and specialty items and nonprofit groups, community college, the clubs, Rotary Clubs and others were there. We had a great kids zone that people enjoyed. We want to thank the Caldwell Crooners for the special national anthem. That was probably one of the highlights was a beautiful national anthem that that whole group did. And they all came out for that. They were all local musicians that were here for that. Our bands, we thank all of them and especially a big shout out to our own Darren Bryant for being a part of that. Darren did a great job in helping lead us. Thanks to all our downtown merchants for all their involvement and everybody really, really worked together. Matthew, I'm gonna ask you a few minutes if you will, just to give us some figures and things that you might have on a quick report and kind of bring us up to date on, on where we are.
Yeah, absolutely. You, you took most of my numbers. That's okay. We'll do a quick little recap. I do have the Placer AI data from the Blackberry Festival and we were up 10,000 from last year. And we have 29,300 people in attendance this year. That's all cell phone data-driven numbers, right at 230 vendors. This year we made 325 cobblers for the Patchwork Cobbler Parade and most of that was made by the Bose Catering. They donated that. Colson Park, yes, thank you. But mainly, the thing I want to do is, is thank all of the department heads that sit here. Your staff this weekend was, were amazing. They were on point and they were kind and they were generous with their time and their energy. The PD, they were there at every single turn. Anytime we had an issue or a barricade that needed to be moved, they were always willing. Fire, you guys were around everywhere. One of the things that we heard from vendors and patrons alike was that how much police and fire presence and emergency services presence there were. They really appreciated the fact that that was there. They knew that they were safe. They knew that anything happened, that they would get, somebody get to them very quickly. Building and maintenance, if you saw those guys, they ran around like crazy the entire weekend, taking care of a couple of power issues and helping set up and tear down. Absolutely amazing guys. The department that doesn't get talked about very often is the trash sanitation department. Those guys are often overlooked as to the job that they do and it's a huge job because without them, if you saw for any length of time when there was a moment when things were so full, sanitation is highly important and it's very underlooked at. So thank you very much to Shane Barrier and his people. And for Parks and Rec, getting all of our stuff delivered and out to us so that we could get it set up. And we had a really good partnership, I think, with the county and their emergency services this year. Something that Dino had mentioned really hasn't been that big of a connection and a community group. We, we brought them in early on so that they'd be a part of it and they really were grateful for that and actually helped participate in some of the barricade stuff that we might have had to scramble with if they weren't able to supply. So really big thank you to the county for their support.
Thank you. Thank you, Matthew. Appreciate all the hard work. I know you were pretty tired after that, that weekend. And Joshua, we didn't mean to leave you out. Thank you for your coverage and all that you did to before, during, and after in getting publicity out for this great, great event that we had. Twenty, this was the 20th year of the Blackberry Festival, so we were, we were glad that we could celebrate it and, and have it back to the full swing after a couple of years of COVID and other things that kept it away. So all of you, thank you very much. Pat everybody on the back and tell them that we all really appreciate it. Council, thank y'all for all you being a part of it and, and allowing it all to be done. So and Mr. Manager, appreciate you were there a lot of time during the weekend, I noticed, and we appreciate you being there to, to lead and, and be a part of that. So good weekend. Thank you. So we'll move on to matters scheduled for public hearing. First item is a water shortage response plan. We will receive public comments tonight regarding the Water Shortage Response Plan. The WSRP is posted on the city website at www.citylenor.com and is available at City Hall for public review during regular business hours. Staff recommends city council adopt the resolution to approve the water shortage response plan for the City of Lenore as revised and as submitted. I will open the public hearing and I'll recognize our Director of All Public Services, Radford Thomas.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if it's just irony or if it's just incredible timing, but it seems like every time I have come before the council with something to say about our drought or water shortage response plan, you know, we come off of four or five inch rain and then we've had another half inch or better this evening, at least at my house anyway. So there's not a lot of water shortage around right now. But in all seriousness, this is a requirement that we have to fulfill with the environmental quality folks with the state. We have to have a plan in place that says how we will respond if we do have a drought situation arise. You have approved this before. We're required to renew this every five years, so we're at our five-year cycle. And it does require action by the council to formally adopt the resolution that you have before you so that we can send that to the state. The folks at NCDQ have reviewed the draft of our water shortage response plan. It, it meets their minimum criteria, so we've satisfied the requirements that we need to with them. I have a letter that, that says that to us for our water system. And the provisions within the water shortage response plan that you've had a chance to review also go along with the Catawba Water Re Water Management Group, the DMAG, the Drought Management Advisory Group that we participate in. All those protocols for each level of drought condition and how we respond to that are all in compliance with the DMAG. So if there's any questions, I'll try to answer them for you. Otherwise, if we have any folks that would want to comment on that, I'll step back.
Any questions from Radford at this time? Thank you. We are in open and public hearing, so if there's anyone that would like to address the council concerning this water shortage response plan, please, you can do so now. Okay, seeing no one, then I will close the public hearing and turn it over to City Council for any discussion and/or motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the water shortage response plan as presented.
Thank you. Motion from Councilmember Stevens to accept the water shortage response plan as presented by staff. No other comments. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. And that carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your work on it. All right, we'll move into our second item for a public hearing tonight, and that will be a special use permit. This is number 1-23. This is for 537 Wilkesboro Boulevard Northeast. This is a quasi judicial public hearing. It will be held to consider a special use permit, number 1-23, as requested by Mr. Maxwell Barlow to permit a major vehicle services business in the general business district, B2 zoning district, for property located at 537 Wilkesboro Boulevard. That's North Carolina PIN number 2759596079. And this is subject to the following conditions. Number one, all lighting shall be fully cut off and shielded as to eliminate slash maximize light spillover onto adjacent residential properties. Number two, the mature buffer and berm are required to remain and must be maintained by the subject property owner in accordance with finding number five as listed in the staff report. If the existing tree line is damaged or dyes, it must be replaced with a 20-foot vegetative buffer. The berm must also be maintained. Item three is the applicant must obtain zoning and sign permits from the Lenore Planning Department within two years of the issuance of the SUP. All proposed changes must adhere to section 714 of the Lenore Zoning Ordinance. I will open the public hearing and first we'll recognize our Director of Planning, who I hope gets, make it through the meeting tonight, Hannah Williams. Hannah, by the way, as you can see, is expecting today or the next few days. So thank you for being with us, Hannah.
Yeah, absolutely. And I had backup just in case. Right.
Oh, yes, sir. Sorry. We gotta do the swag since it is quasi judicial. That's why you earn your money.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you now.
All right. So this business is already operational. It's located just west to the left of Bobcat Lenore, to the rear of a Coria property. And he, he did not propose any changes to the site, and so it was kind of caught when we found, when he was applying for a sign permit. And although automotive service is a permitted use in the B2 zoning district, major vehicle with hydraulic hoses and, and large equipment and vehicle, major vehicle service is what it's called, that is a special use permit in the general business zone. It is permitted by right in industrial districts. And so we just kind of said, okay, well, we're gonna get this through the special use permit process. There are many major vehicle service uses in that area, Bobcat of Lenore being one of them. Also, the Caldwell County School Bus Garage is another example of major, major equipment or major vehicle service that's also nearby, also located in the B2 zoning district. So if you think about the Wilkesboro Boulevard corridor as it leaves like High Brighton Drive headed east out of town, it does start to feel a lot more industrial. It's low density. There are very large tracks and planning staff finds it a, an appropriate place for major vehicle services to locate as opposed to other places that are zone B2 in Lenore. This parcel is sort of landlocked. It doesn't have the public frontage that's required, 25 feet, but that, there's no subdivision proposed at this time. There's no lot lines moving, so it's not something we can address right now. But there is a 45-foot wide driveway easement that the property owner has to cross over the Coria property to get to the property where this business is located. So and there, there's a picture of that in the staff report, which is in your packets tonight, Appendix A, and that is recorded at the Register of Deeds. The property also abuts residential uses to the rear. Those residential uses are kind of part of the Lower Creek neighborhood, but there is a pretty thick berm and vegetative buffer that would protect those residential uses from any unwanted spillover noise or lighting. And there are provisions in the conditions and the findings that would make sure that that stays maintained throughout this, the activity of this special use permit. So those are the major concerns that I had and that I have to share with you today. And I am open to any other questions that you might have.
Hannah, is there an elevation change between that property and the residential property?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, there's a pretty steep slope.
Especially on the one furthest west of the, directly behind it, there's a significant bank that leads up to that. So, yeah.
Yeah, it, it is very significant. You're, you're correct. So I wasn't too concerned as things stand today, but I wanted to make sure those provisions were in there. If there's ever some kind of landslide or runoff where the, the trees do, the mature trees do die, they would be required to maintain a 20-foot vegetative buffer and put it back immediately.
Hannah, is there a restriction of hours of operation?
There is. Let's see. We do not have it listed specifically in these findings, but it would be appropriate to add it under finding number eight if, if you wanted to. Currently, the business operates typical hours between eight and five.
I'd say it's pretty standard for it, isn't it?
Yeah, that's consistent with the surrounding businesses through, you've got a car dealership to the, to the west, and this is automotive in nature and you've got automotive nature to the, as you mentioned, twice to the east.
Hannah?
Yes.
You said that this company would have to cross over the Coria property to get to their business?
Mm-hmm. Yes, and they have an easement.
Is this law or is this something that the two property owners would work out or is there a requirement for them to give them the right of way?
There, it already exists today. I, I called it out just because it does already exist, that there is a 45-foot driveway easement from Wilkesboro Boulevard across the Coria property. It existed before the current ownership that Barlow Solutions owns this property, but it is current with his ownership as well.
It's the old Firetron building.
That's right. Yeah. Yes, sir.
Do you want to submit your written report as part of your testimony and ask the City Council to consider it in its deliberations?
Yes. Yes, I would. I submit my findings and the conditions for, for the record.
Good idea.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council?
Just one other, just in case I've missed it. Is this to expand an existing business or to bring them into?
No. This business started late 2022 and it started at this location. I believe it moved from somewhere in the county into Lenore, but it's not proposing to expand at this time.
Okay, so this is just to bring it into compliance?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Kind of a cleanup, I guess you could say. Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Hannah. Okay, we're in a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council concerning this special use permit public hearing? Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to council for any comments or action, please.
Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the special use permit as presented to us by staff and recommended by staff, given it's in compliance with our master plan and I think it just makes sense. So that's my motion.
And we, do we need to add anything?
I would just say that you should adopt the findings and conclusions set out in the staff report.
And we adopt the findings and conclusions as set out in the staff report.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion from Councilmember Perdue. I'm not going to repeat that motion, but it's for the acceptance of the special use permit, number 1-23, as presented by staff, including all the findings and the things, conditions that we, that we put upon. If no other discussion, I will call for the question. I need to close the public hearing first on that. I did it? Okay, I closed the whole hearing. Thank you. All right, anyway, we'll call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you very much. All right, appreciate that. Thank you, Hannah, for your work on that. We'll move on then to, and next section is consent agenda items. This consists of minutes of the City Council meeting of Tuesday, June 20th, as submitted. Item B are minutes of the committee, the whole meeting of Tuesday, June 27th, as submitted. And item C, our contract for services. This is a request for qualifications. Lenore Fire Department Station Number One Infrastructure Repair, which is Stormwater. Requests for qualifications were sent out on Friday, May 26th, with a closing date of Friday, June 9th. Based on the selection committee responses and the RFQs submitted, staff is making recommendation for approval to award the contract for the Lenore Fire Department Infrastructure Repair for Stormwater to WK Dixon for basic engineering services not to exceed the sum of $546,366 as submitted and as recommended by city staff. And item D is a street naming for a shared driveway off of Walt Arnie Road, Stowings Place. The planning staff is recommending the naming of Stowings Place as it is currently a shared driveway that serves three dwellings without an appropriate signage to allow for E911, that's Emergency 911 addressing, and access to rear properties. That's the four items that are up for our consent agenda item, and I will open the council for any discussion and/or motion.
Mayor, I make the motion that we approve the consent agenda items A, B, C, as presented.
Okay, we have a motion from Mayor Proton Thomas to approve the consent agenda items A, B, C, and D as presented. No other comments or questions. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you very much. Okay, we will move on then. Next on our agenda, our requests and petitions of any citizens. If there's anyone tonight that would like to address the council at this time, this is the time to do so on our agenda. Yes, ma'am. If you'll come forward. Jennifer, we know you, but if you'll give us your name and address and all that, we'll...
My name is Jennifer Indicott. My legal address, I guess, is 107 Main Street Northwest, Downtown Lenore. I would like to make a statement regarding the social district that was enacted by the City Council for the Downtown Lenore and request a consideration of extending the days that are allowed by the social district to include more than the Wednesday through Saturday admission. And I'm going to read some of the notes that I made after this weekend, following the North Carolina Blackberry Festival. "As a business owner in Downtown Lenore that sells adult beverages, I would like to thank you immensely for passing the social district. I cannot express how much it changed the game in a positive way this past weekend at the North Carolina Blackberry Festival for my business. We hit sales numbers that would never have been achieved otherwise, and as a monetary incentive, will be contributing more to our area sales tax base. There were multiple positive comments from patrons, both local and out of town, regarding the ability to walk in, purchase a beverage, and continue enjoying the festivities. Out of curiosity, I asked some other businesses their opinion on the social district. One business who does not sell alcohol but allows social district beverages only into their establishment said it has improved aspects of her business and she feels like she is in complementary relationship with other businesses around Downtown Lenore and feels that it will contribute to the increase in usage of her own business. Another business that does sell, sell alcohol reports their weekend festival sales were also above what was expected, thanks to the ability to accommodate more patrons than their facility could accommodate. While I can't speak for everyone, I feel like this has been a proactive step in moving Downtown Lenore revitalization, and I would like to request the consideration of expanding the number of days that it's included to include, if not Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, at least one or all three of those days. And that is all. If you have other questions directly to a business owner, I would be happy to answer or address those. And thank you again for approving that and changing the direction of our, my own business."
Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer. We appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We will certainly take that under advisement to the council and present it after some considerations and put together it the right way. Appreciate that very much. Is anyone else that would like to address the council tonight during this time? Yes, sir. Come forward and give us your name, address.
Good evening. My name is James Patterson. I live at 2668 Tud Hill Drive now in Gamble, but I grew up here in the city of Lenore. And I grew up playing baseball and football under the direction of Mayor Gibbons and his brother and several others. I am a Hall of Fame inductee in Selma, North Carolina. I was a USSA umpire. I am now the committee, a committee member for our Black Hall of Fame here in Lenore. So it has come to a discussion and it's kind of problematic. And hits home with me that the city would have a problem with us recognizing our own. Okay? I have a problem with that. And I don't agree with us being questioned as to where we're going to put our plaques, or where we're going to put our pictures, or why wasn't the city notified? Why is that a problem? I see that as being an issue. Okay? And like I say, it hits home with me. Now, we have Hall of Fame inductees, and I'm going to include myself, that can be recognized outside of the city of Lenore, but not good enough to be recognized in the city of Lenore. And I'm going to name one, particularly Shawna Banner. They played basketball at And I'm going to name one particularly, Shawna Banner, that played basketball at West Caldwell. And this young lady was an All-American, okay? Went on to play Division One college ball. The city found out that we were inducting her into our Black Hall of Fame. All of a sudden, now she's going to be inducted into the Hall of Fame here. It's kind of ironic. Why did it take for us recognizing our own before this young lady was recognized? And I'm not even speaking for myself not being recognized. That's neither here nor there. My issue is with, as a committee member, as well as my brother that sits here that's in the Hall of Fame here, and Lester Whittington also, and Reverend Mike Perkins, as long as Mayor Protim Chrissy Thomas. Why is it an issue for us to recognize our own and be questioned as to where we're going to put the plaques and say in comments such as, "Well, this is city property"? We're not making adjustments to the wall at the Martin Luther King Center. Was there any questions about pictures being placed at the Mulberry Rec Center on those It's an issue. I have a problem with that. And that hit home with me when I was told about this situation. So that's just my thoughts, my opinion. I don't like it. And being a member of the city and growing up here, that really bothers me, that we would go to that extent. I thought, you know, at some point, we have to grow up and get out of this thing of, "Well, you guys are doing this, and you, we over here, we're doing this." What happened? Why is that? That's a problem. Okay? That's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. One, I want to, I'm not, I want to straighten one thing out. There's no one that's opposed to the Black Hall of Fame at all. The only thing that we have ever said, and when it was questioned, was the property is owned by the city of Lenore at Martin Luther King. To have something done there, the council just has to vote on that, as we would naming it for Sam Sturgis, as we did for naming other facilities, the Kenny Story Field, Ken Hare Fire Department Wall, Red Greer Place, I can, there's others. They're all, were voted on by council. So it's not a problem with, that we, that the council, I think, and I'm speaking only now, they are all welcome to speak, that we're not opposed to that, it was that we just needed to follow procedure to get it on record that the Hall of Fame could be located in a city-owned facility. Yes, sir?
Thank you.
Please, sir.
My name is Derek Witherspoon, 203 Newland Place Northwest Lenore. I have a unique position in this whole circumstance, with the exception of me, Councilman Perkins. In 1979, me and a few other guys told the director at that time, we needed to start a basketball camp, because I'm a retired teacher and coach, realized that all these other guys have these opportunities that I missed out on, that our neighborhood's not. Now, at that time, I came back with the idea of starting a summer camp. That camp started in 1979, and it's still running today. Also started a summer league. I think that was about '82, is also running today. Now, because of those things, I went on to do what I was, what I, I guess, accomplishment I had, that got me into the Hall of Fame here. Lester Whittington, he stayed on me, said, "Derek," and he's one of my friends, "Why don't you apply, put you in?" I said, "No." I said, "Until they put certain other people I knew that were in, that I don't feel like deserved to be in." So finally, the third year, he came to me and said, "You need to go ahead and put your stuff in, and let's just see what happens." I said, "You've been on me all the time." I said, "I appreciate, what do you think about my career? I'm going to go ahead and do it." I got in. Now, I say that to go back, in 1979, in my career that got me in the Hall of Fame, my proudest accomplishment is the picture in the Martin Luther King Center of my first championship team, the first championship that was played there. We didn't ask to do that. The camps, we put pictures up. Nobody asked about, "There's a problem with that." Now, as we're starting to do something a little more noticeable, it's, "Wait a minute now, it's getting a little big. We'll let y'all put the little stuff in there, but we won't let y'all put the ceilings here. We're not going to let y'all do this." And my problem is...
I don't see anybody said, "We wouldn't let you do that."
I'm saying, we put it in there, nobody said a thing, and you've been up to some of the camps.
Oh, by all means.
And the pictures are up there.
Yeah.
Nothing was said about it.
I don't know exactly when the camp was probably agreed upon. We weren't on the council then. I'm sure it was probably agreed that it was passed with the Recreation Facility Director at the time, that it was done and brought before the council or whatever and approved. We don't, you know, can't answer that at this point in time, but anything that's done on, all I'm saying is, anything done on city facility just needs to be approved. That's all that we're saying. It's not opposed to it at all.
We're just saying, nobody said anything up until now, there's been a conflict of the two, of basically Shawna Banner. So I'm, like I said, to me, it's just simple. When I started here, my athletic career, viewed my community center as a place I could go and hone my skills. Mulberry, we could go every Saturday from 12 to 3 and had to bring a pair of tennis shoes that we did not rock down. One of my things now is, I got more pair of tennis shoes I never had, because that made me have, felt bad about not having more than one pair of tennis shoes. So up there, come as you are, what you got on, street shoes, whatever. Now, I feel that what we're doing is for the community during that time, those not being recognized. And this is a way to show that, and any problem to somebody, excuse "problem," it may not be the right word, but there shouldn't be any negative opinions about what we're doing.
I didn't know there were. I thought, I'm sort of caught off guard. I didn't know that we, there was no negative to this. This was just to follow what is the right procedure, to be presented to the council for approval, to have a Hall of Fame located in a city facility, owned facility. That would have been very easy to do with Mr. Philip Harper, the Recreation Director. It would have been, just come before us, and like you're doing now, that's all it was. But it was, it was sort of like it was already being planned, and we just, we needed to make sure it was done in the right way. That's all this is in. There's nothing here saying that anybody's opposed to that. I will speak quickly to Shawna Banner. Shawna Banner was nominated, I serve on the Caldwell County Sports Hall of Fame Selection Committee. Shawna Banner has probably been nominated for a couple of years. They only do four a year, and there were probably 100 to 150 people that are being considered every year to go in. Shawna came very close last year, she was elected this year. It had nothing to do with being selected for the Black Hall of Fame. It was selected, Shawna was selected, you know, this year for the Hall of Fame, as was Sean Denny has also been selected to go in this year. So, and there's, and there's two others that are also going in for it and on that. So that's, that goes on every year. The Caldwell County Sports Hall of Fame, it's not city, by the way, it is the Caldwell County Sports Hall of Fame, and that has been going on since 1989, and they select four people, members every year to go into that, and that people are considered for that. So I just want to give you an idea of that, for that. So anyone else have any comments to make? Council, anyone? Go ahead.
Well, I think to address what Mr. Witherspoon and Patterson referred to, it's not so much as opposition to having the event, but the opposition is, or the problem is, is hanging the plaques on the wall at the MLK Center. It isn't that me, as a being a board member, is going to deface anything at the center. We're not going to paint it or tear down any walls. We have our meetings there, have been for the last month, to plan this, and the reason that it has not been announced is that it isn't until August. So we didn't see, announce it in June, May, or July. And we look at the MLK Center as opposed to the Civic, I mean, the Civic Center where all the plaques are hung, we're just doing that so that the youth that attend or support the MLK Center will see something in our community that they can be proud of. It's not any of those youth that will go out to the Civic Center where those plaques are being displayed, to even look at them, to know who are we, or what, who of us are on there. So that is the whole purpose of this. And had we known, I didn't know, that it was going to create an issue with us, and you look at the center, there are all kind of pictures, plaques, everything hanging on the wall there. And like you said to me, Mayor, I don't know if those were approved prior to our, your mayorship or me coming on the council. I don't know. But I do know that they are murials and pictures and everything hanging on the wall there. So all we are asking is just, the city manager, as you use, a blessing for us to do what we want to do for our community. That's all not, we're not going to have a contractor there to put up any, there's a big showcase up there that's nailed to the wall with every event that has occurred there sports-wise. All we're doing is just adding to that, so that when you come into the center and you walk down that corridor to the gym, that there would be something there displayed for people to see. Nobody goes out to the Civic Center to look at those pictures on the wall out there.
I disagree with that. Most people do.
Not a lot of our children, our kids can't get there to see that. That's all we want to do.
I mean, but again, that's a different point.
All we want to do is have something that our children and our community can see that they would appreciate.
I understand what you're saying, and I think there's, we're not in disagreement here. I haven't been since we saw it brought up. All we're saying was, it is a city-owned facility, and we just need to approve it that we're having a Hall of Fame placed in a city-owned facility. I don't see it as really hard. It's not a big, it's not a big issue. Somebody sees something I don't see.
So I think the first thing we all need to recognize is, this is, it seems to be a very sensitive situation or moment for members of the community to take time to just try to wrap our arms around. There's meetings that happen at Martin Luther King that are not city-related. Freeman Culture Center meets there, NAAC meets there. The meeting, the first question was, is there an issue with meeting? It's not a city committee. It's the Caldwell County Black Hall of Fame is something that we're trying to do to preserve our own. And I think that both can coexist. There's nothing wrong with having, that's not the issue. But I don't recall everything from every place I have been in every city facility that there's been an approval. And my biggest question is, what's the bless in that way? Because everything that, I don't recall in the eight years, everything that's on the wall upstairs in the city office where we've had ribbon cuttings, I don't recall everything being approved. And I could be wrong about that, we'd have to look back through that. So that was the first thing that just felt really uncomfortable, is that really, what's the real issue? When we have events, when we have the Jazz Festival, we make every effort to let people know, we involve people when it's time for them to know about that. Anything we have, we're very inclusive about the council members knowing, the mayor being invited to participate. I think all those are conversations that have happened, that happened along the way. So for me, what's the bless? It should be natural to understand that. I know that things that's been said, that said Mulberry, there's things on the walls that probably hadn't had a blessing or hadn't even come before the council. It just feels a little uncomfortable, or it's worth just taking a moment to examine or understand why this potentially feels like an issue. You know, there's some emotions around this thing, and we're trying to do a great thing. And no, our children can't get to the Civic Center to look at plaques on the wall. This is just an opportunity for us to do something to, I mean, there's 10% black people in Caldwell County and the current Hall of Fame that's operated by Rotary, they have their process and their way of recognizing people, and it's taken some of our people a little longer to get recognized. So just to get some context behind, while we're spending time at trying to do something to preserve our own athletics and our history, and it's the Sam Sturgis Recreation Center. I don't see what the issue would be of putting, you know, plaques on the wall at Martin Luther King Center for our people to come and take a look at. So I think it's a good conversation, it feels a little tense, and we don't normally have tense meetings, and for the most part...
Chris, I don't think it's tense. I think it's a matter...
Well, it just feels emotional.
There's no one opposed to this.
That's, that's the thing. I don't think, if you had a vote right now, I think it's unanimous.
Yeah, we're all for it.
I don't even know why we've been bringing it before the council.
Because it's owned by the city.
We do not bring everything.
Yes, we do.
I haven't, I don't...
Yes, we do. Everything has ever been named for anything.
Named?
You're naming this the Black Sports Hall of Fame.
No, no, that's just the name of the event. We're not putting a name on the center saying that. That's just the name of the event.
Right.
That name will not be displayed in the center anywhere. The only thing that's going to...
You want to have the Black Hall of Fame with plaques, with that on it and underneath it? I would think you would if you're going to recognize it.
I mean, the plaques will be on the wall, and I'm sure the wording in the plaques may have that in there. Is it the, so is that the issue? I mean, is that the concern?
The issue is that it is owned by the city, and the city needs to approve what goes there. Now, you're talking about pictures on walls and trophies and that kind of thing, that's in Mulberry, at Squatik Center, everywhere. This is naming a facility for, this is going to become the North Carolina, I mean, excuse me, the Black...
Well, there's obviously some confusion here.
That's exactly right.
It's not a name. We won't be naming anything there.
Martin Luther King Center.
No name is going to be, we're not changing the name.
No, I didn't say we're changing the name of the center. You're always putting a wall that would be the Black Sports Hall of Fame. Would you not have that at the top with the plaques underneath?
The wall is already there. We're just going to show the plaques on the wall. We're not changing the wall.
I think it's...
Mr. Mayor, may I... We do too. I bore it all away. I don't, I'm kind of confused here.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a couple of questions?
Please.
In a statement. First of all, I appreciate our residents coming and talking to us about this tonight, because the way we solve issues is to talk about it. Thank you very much, and all the council as well. I think my, I have absolutely no opposition to the Black Hall of Fame being in the facility. I would absolutely be fine with that. I think that the issue really is, what is the process that we should undertake to make this proper through our normal channels of business? Do we have a form? Do we have a board? Do we have a meeting? Is there a certain thing? So if Mr. Hill...
Typically, what happens is, if someone wants to name a room, like for example Sylvia Green, the department head brought that to city council, had committed the whole meeting, the name went back and adopted that. When Kenny Story, the field was named, or something put on the fence honoring him, because again, the next director may want to take it down. Well, if council's blessed, as I told Mr. Perkins, then I don't think the director's going to take it down, because council's endorsed this being there. We did that with Merlin Perry at the Greenway, we've done that with Ken Hare, the wall at the fire department, we've done that since I've been here, and I think it was before I got here, Lang Bailey had said before, they name stuff along, over the years for that as well. Typically, it goes to the department head, they bring it to council, and you guys go back and say yes or no. It's all, that's the process, this process has been for years. I think this one was that we found out, I think the mayor got a call about it after the fact, and council was unaware, and he wanted to make sure all the council was aware, and they signed off on it. and they signed off on it. And that's simply what we're doing, you sign off on it, it's good to go.
Okay. So, thank you, Mr. Hildebrand. And Mr. Mayor, I think there's been a disconnect in communication at some point with this process, and I would respectfully ask that if we can come to an agreement on, what's the best path forward to make this situation rectified for all? Because I personally am fine with it, great with it, but I also understand that we don't just want any organization at any time deciding they want to do something on our property without us having some type of notification and paperwork, so that everybody is on the same page. Because we want to be honoring all of our residents, we want to be honoring all of our citizens and their accomplishments. And we just want to make sure that it is done in a proper procedure, so that in the future, other groups that come to us, we can say, "This is how you do this properly." Because I think that is the best path forward for our city, all of our community, because we all are interested in moving Lenore forward into a world where we can all be on the same page, living together, being respectful of everyone. So I would, I don't know how to make a motion on this, because it sounds fairly complicated. I don't want to make a motion that is inappropriate.
I mean, the location, which wall, and you name it, and you go. That's all you have to do.
Okay. So, what is the specific information that council would need to vote on? Location in the facility?
You can answer that.
I don't care about where it's, I mean, I'll leave that up to what, Lester and-
Whether they want to put it on the wall, it's fine. It's just that we're approving that the Hall of Fame can be in the MLK Center, same as we would do with any naming of something like that, or putting something like that.
I would like to make a motion. Go ahead, sir.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, I'll say this, as a committee member, okay, and a city, growing up here in the city of Lenore. What we want to do is, we don't want to change the wall or anything, we're not gonna put any, we will hang a banner for people to recognize when they come into our banquet on August the 4th. However, the wall that we're gonna place the plaques on, that we would like to get, whatever it takes, to get your blessing or your approval, to place it in the hallway going down by Lester's offices, office toward the gymnasium and the bathrooms on that wall. So that as our kids, I have a grandson.
You take your time.
I have seven-year-old grandson. I take a lot of pride. Plays a lot of sports, just like I did when I was growing up. Had it not been for Mayor Gibbons, I probably wouldn't have, I don't know that I would've been involved in sports, and my mom. Reverend Perkins has known me since I was a kid, so has Mayor Gibbons. Have a lot of respect for these guys. Okay? All we want is to recognize our own, get the blessing, to place the plaques on the wall going down the hallway, the corridor to the gym, if that's what it takes. That's all we're asking. We're not gonna make alterations to the wall.
We're all in agreement with that. There's no one here-
No, that's easy.
Yeah, we're not in agreement. This way, at least it's been approved by the council that our facility can house the Black Sports Hall of Fame, which is all we're saying, you're putting a blessing. If you want to put something that says, "Black Sports Hall of Fame," and then put all their blacks underneath it, that's what we're doing, it's just saying that we're giving you the permission to use a city facility to do that, same as we would other things like that.
Okay. And I'll add this to that. With that being said, I just didn't think it was appropriate for us to be asked to, "Why couldn't we place them down at the Freedman Cultural Center?" How many people go down there every day? Do any of you guys go down there every day? Our kids don't go down there every day, but there's kids in that gymnasium every single day that that gym is open. I referee basketball. My grandson plays basketball up there. Okay? His kids see that stuff day in, day out, night in, and night out. And I think that's a positive, where we're trying to drive our community and our kids to see, "Okay, look at what, look at what they've accomplished. You can do the same thing." That's our drive. Takes a village to raise a kid.
Absolutely.
That's what we're trying to do.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that city council approve the use of the corridor leading into the gymnasium at the Martin Luther King Center be utilized for the Black Hall of Fame, Black Sports Hall of Fame, is that the correct wording? Caldwell County Black Sports Hall of Fame. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the use of that entryway into the gym to honor our residents and to encourage our children to be the best they can be.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any other comments from anyone? All right. We have a motion from-
I would ask Josh to make that part of our city website, to note that. If there's a way to, under the recreation headings, that seems like something to get some word out on it.
Yeah, I'll see if we can do that.
Yeah. That's not part of your motion, John.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion from council member Bill that we approve the Sports Hall of Fame at the MLK Center wall, after the banquet is done in August, whatever. That will be the site. As you do them each year, you can, they'll be placed at that site as the Caldwell, Black Caldwell Sports Hall of Fame. I'll get it right here in a minute. Anyway, any other comments? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank y'all. We appreciate that, and we will... All right, is anyone else that would like to address the council, we're in the petitions or requests of citizens? Okay. Seeing no one, thank you. We do not have any reports of boards and commissions this evening, so we'll move on to the report and recommendations of the city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Good evening. Tonight, you have some items for information. The Shelby Ray Moore Band will perform on downtown stage on Friday, July 21st, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. Also, we've got this weekend, the Jump Street Drive Music Festival will be held Friday and Saturday, it's a two-day event at the MLK Center. I think it starts at 6 o'clock, 6 o'clock each evening, and goes probably to 10 or so, I believe. Then you've got, the Board of Adjustment will meet on Monday, July 24th, at 5:30 in these chambers. We have a movie, The Bad Boys, or The Bad Guys, will be shown on the downtown stage on Friday, July 28th, from 8:30 to 11:00 p.m. And also, the annual Harambea Festival will take place on August 5th to the 11th at the MLK Center. And events will be scheduled throughout the week, and you can go on our website and find those events as they occur. There's many of those things happening each day, so go to the website to see what's occurring each day. Tonight, item for information, not for information, but for action, we have an order of abatement for 712 Hillcrest Street. City staff recommends adoption of an order of abatement for the property at 712 Hillcrest Street, and that's parcel ID 0619225, also NC PIN 2749581926. And that will direct staff to demolish and remove the structure at 712 Hillcrest.
Okay. You've heard the request for the order of abatement for 712 Hillcrest Street Northwest for the recommendation. Council, any questions, or then I'll entertain a motion when you're ready.
Motion to approve the order.
And a motion from council member Purdue to approve the order of abatement as presented for 712 Hillcrest Street. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Also, I have two other items tonight to bring your attention, and we don't have a committee, the whole meeting this month. So, the first is, the city owns a bridge on 321 Countryside Drive. I wasn't aware we owned the bridge, but DOT contacted us to say a truck had hit that bridge, and they did an inspection of the bridge and said the bridge needs to be repaired. And so, Public Works Operation Manager, Mr. Hogan, went back and got a quote from someone that's doing bridge work in Hickory, that happened to be in the area, to go back and repair that bridge. It's about $65,000, was shot crete out of Tennessee, and we're gonna proceed with that repair in order to go back and keep the bridge safe for our citizens.
I hope we're gonna subjugate back against the responsible parties.
It's a hit and run. Hit and run. So, but I think somebody had boom up on the truck, and you can see a little notch in the concrete where it hit that, but DOT didn't inspect it and brought it to our attention, and so we're moving on that. So, just want to make you aware of that. The second thing is, as we met last week regarding the mill renovation projects, part of that, we have a brownfield agreement, as you're aware, and we've been using that money to go back and do environmental studies on some of those properties over there. The initial work is back on the steel mill, there's about $69,000 more work to be done. It can be paid for with our grant. Greg and Eisenhower contacted Radford Thomas and myself to let us know that he recommends we move forward with that, and with no objection, we'll do that, to get that project moving forward. So, again, it's covered by grant funds, and that's what the money's for, but DEQ's acquiring some additional environmental work on that structure. So, that's just two updates I want to provide to you tonight.
Okay.
Just questions.
Any questions to Mr. Hildebrand? Okay. We'll move on to report and recommendations to the city attorney, Mr. Rohr.
Nothing to report, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Report and recommendation from the mayor's office, I do have an announcement of a board appointment, and this will be for an alternate to our Board of Adjustments. Michael Corecchia, who serves on the planning board, is, the planning board is made up of members of the planning board, and they also serve dual role on the Board of Adjustments. We're needing a member to that who would be the alternate for that, and Mr. Corecchia has agreed that he would serve from the planning board, and serve also on the Board of Adjustments as the alternate to that. We will make that recommendation to you, present it to you tonight, and we will make that recommendation to you at the meeting-
August 1st.
August 1st. Thank you. I was looking for that. Right, it is. August 1st on that. And the other one is a board appointment for the Lenore Tourism Development Authority, Karen Davidson, who owns now, she and her family own the Highland Thistle Bed and Breakfast. And as you know, the Tourism Development Authority is made up of people, members who are actually bringing in the occupancy tax to our community. So we do have several, a couple of open seats on that, and she has agreed to serve on that. So, I'll make that recommendation to you tonight, also to bring up on August 1st, to put her on the Tourism Development Authority, the Lenore Tourism Development Authority. So, just bring them for your attention tonight. Is there anything from any of our council members that need to come before us tonight?
You talked about the festivals. Council members, hope you guys can come out this weekend, and we will be talking more about the Caldwell County Black Sports Hall of Fame. We have tickets, so everybody's invited, but we've got a little bit of time to get that up and going. So, of course, as always, we want the appropriate time to let everybody know that that's happening, and we'll have tickets if anybody would like to come out and support it.
Okay. Thank you for that. All right. Anything else to come before us this evening? If not, we stand adjourned.